Now, following the meeting of Clarve County Board of Commissioners' order, please rise for a moment in silence, prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray for the people affected by the hurricanes. Help relieve the anxieties of evacuees as they worry about their families and homes. We pray for those who were lost, and for those who lost their homes, we pray that they will find temporary housing till they can rebuild a future. For those who are in the path of the inevitable future hurricanes, help them prepare to protect their homes and family. Help us to educate all that no one is immune to the potential of disasters, small or large, from single-family disasters to entire communities such as Maui, Hawaii. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Noxton?
Yes, are there any guests concerning county business at this time? Hearing them, we'll move on.
Next item is the presentation by Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau.
Would you like to come up and join us up here?
You could actually go right into that computer right there. You should be able to pull back.
I mean, recharge my balance extra for that.
Sorry, guys, I'm sorry, Elliot.
Chris, do you need an ID card?
No, I just, what's your, what's your, I need Wi-Fi access.
You don't know the password.
Isn't it written down here by the other computer somewhere?
You should be able to go right and connect an HDMI cable direct to that, or can't you do that, Chris?
It's a, it's a SharePoint, it's a SharePoint file, so I need Internet access.
Brandon or Caleb?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Do we call him?
We should have like a help sign that we hold up when we need him, you know?
I might be able to do that.
I just heard the door open.
Caleb's not here, but Brandon was.
This is Brandon. Chris, you need your assistance? We need your assistance. Take notice, we always call on these young people to come out and save us older people. While we're waiting, the weather for today is mostly cloudy, some rain, possible thunderstorms during the evening. Current temperature is what, Kelly? About seventy degrees?
Don't we have apology on three minutes?
They could've taken up my three minutes, next twelve minutes.
Yeah, you're next.
I saw all these sad face emojis showing up on Facebook.
Thank you, Brandon.
I'm sorry, Elliot, that was totally my fault.
No, you could've said that, I'm not saying that, I remember.
I don't know, on the way here, I'm like, I don't think I hit sand, of course I didn't. Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, everybody here, thank you so much. Since I've taken up my three minutes forever, I do want to just highlight some things really quickly. We have some new data I think you guys might find really kind of interesting. But first, I wanted to just go over some of our financial reports. You should have gotten the audit that I had sent a few weeks ago, and all the audit data is summed up right in front of you. But I really want to tell you that our financial position is strong, we have cash in the bank. So from a financial perspective, we're doing very, very well because of the performance of the tax over the last couple of years, thankfully. But I wanted to also show you what the the payments of the tax are in relation to counties since nineteen to twenty-three. We continue to see very, very strong growth in the tax. And of course, I'll send this to you so you can have it to take a look at at your leisure. We just did get two payments. This is the first and second quarters hotel tax growth of twenty-three. And believe it or not, the Monroe County tax was twenty-nine dollars greater than the year before, which just, yeah, I just, I had a call, I'm like, is that right? Because she just sent it to me, she said yes. So we're about in the same place we were last year, at least with Carbon. Wayne is down a little, I'm sorry, with Monroe. Wayne is down a little, so we'll see where the next two payments come in. But we're thinking we'll probably be about the same place in the second quarters of where the year before, which is good because it's exceeded twenty-one and twenty-two. So that's actually very, very strong performance for the hotel tax. These are the financials from twenty-two, which you've already gotten in the audit. So they're in this report for quick reference if you want to take a look at it when I provide you with the full report. But I wanted to go over some marketing data that's kind of really interesting and just kind of tell you a little bit about what we're working on right now. We freshened up all our creative for our summer campaigns that's running right now. We're basically at the point where we're switching over to fall, which is upon us, which is crazy, but is. So we actually shot some good fall stuff last year, so that's starting to run now and will continue to run over the next few weeks. Beverage trail, we created a museum trail. Trails are incredibly popular, we continue to do that from a product standpoint and continue to still work on PTN. We're actually transferring PTN to a new platform, Amazon Web Services, which is going to make it much more powerful and will have much more capability. When streaming becomes more and more mainstream, we'll be in a really good position to provide those signals everywhere. And we're developing new apps that will have abilities for us to go on. We're right now on Amazon Fire and Roku, but we'll be on Apple TV. We'll have apps on all Samsung and Xbox devices. So we're developing all that right now through Vimeo, and that should all be done by the time we update you next. So hopefully, we'll be on many, many more streaming platforms as we go forward. On this slide, just to say, we're forging more relationships with broadcast stations. So we're doing a lot of stuff with WVIA, with NBC and ABC stations in New York and Philadelphia, BRC thirteen, Wolf TV, BRE, NEP. They're actually taking some of our, a lot of our content and repurposing it and using it in their regular broadcasts, so we're pretty thrilled about that. That's helpful to us. And we developed a new program called Pocono Showcase in partnership with BRC thirteen, and that showcases the music of people who perform here in the Poconos at a lot of our venues. Some of them are, have incredible backgrounds, like they've toured all across the country, and it's just a really cool thing. So we taped the second and third episodes, it'll run out toward, to the end of the year. Also on this one, based upon some of the meetings that we have, Mr. Chairman, we're continuing to develop the website based on the EDC marketing, both internally and externally. We're actually testing some digital marketing right now, so we'll be able to give you some input or feedback on that at our next meeting. So that was as a process of the meeting that you had not too long ago. Sales I'll skip over really because that's group sales, so again, we'll be in here. It's not really from our county. Oh, there we go. We don't have a lot of sales venues that can actually host meetings, so I'll just kind of skip over to some of our new data. Just as a reminder, Public Dashboard is updated monthly at that web address, and we also are updating our whole research suite constantly, and the two URLs are there in case you'd ever like to access them. But this is kind of really what I wanted to get into, the next two or three slides, which are kind of interesting. This aggregates data from, and I apologize, it's a little busy, but it aggregates data from our short-term rentals and regular hotel performance. This was for the month of July. So what we're basically seeing is we're continuing to see a little bit of erosion in the rates that's being charged. That's the average daily rate because demand is starting to plateau. So the properties have to compete a little bit more for occupancy, so that definitely affects rate. We're also seeing the consumer being a lot more price sensitive. We're seeing that more and more now, we actually do a quarterly survey. We did a third quarter survey that we sent out there, but now it's pretty clear that the guests are being a little bit more price sensitive. But it's interesting that our short-term rentals are still doing fairly well, and I have a breakout slide on that. So people are becoming a little bit more selective on what they're doing for overnight stays. But for the most part, we're in the green in a lot of categories, which are incredibly important. This is the short-term rental breakout, which I wanted to show you really quickly. We can actually get breakouts for individual counties, which I can give you anytime you want it. What's really interesting is the amount that's being charged. So our occupancy is up one point two percent, our ADR was down four percent, but the average charge is still four hundred and thirty-seven dollars a night, which outpaces the full state. Our average daily rate charged, even with decline, exceeds what's being charged in any any area within the state. So it exceeds Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, Hershey, we're number one as far as rate charged. But again, we're starting to see an adjustment with that downward. What you're seeing in front of you now is our new report. We're able to subscribe to a service that tracks IP addresses and marries those IP addresses from this to credit card spends. So we get a fairly good sample of who's coming within the market based upon what advertising is generating and consumed on this, and what they're spending, where they're spending it, and where they're coming from. Now, it's not a full sample, but it's a very, very strong sample. So it helps us to be able to direct advertising pretty succinctly. Just, it's amazing and frightening at the same time, which you can get. But what you're seeing here is year-to-date, January through June, of credit card dollar spend, the cost per transaction, and the amount of transactions. So this is from seven million transactions within our market. And looking at this, to your left, the top origins or where people are coming from the most are New York, Philadelphia, no surprise there, our own market, which is kind of interesting, Harrisburg, Lebanon, Lancaster, York, Washington, Hagerstown, which we're trying to develop in Baltimore, Maryland. Also, too, the inner column shows the spend by age, which helps us when we're targeting advertising vehicles. So as you can see, the age range from forty to sixty-four. Now, we target a female aged thirty-five to fifty-four, that falls right within that very nicely. And looking at the spending levels or incomes, fifty thousand to two hundred thousand are our highest income spend level attractions. So that helps us. Then this is just kind of interesting, too, what do they spend on when they come here? F and B by far, food and beverage, is what people spend the most on when they come into this market. Retail is second, which was kind of a little bit of a surprise. Transportation has definitely increased because of the cost of, oh, I'm sorry, Wayne, were you?
Yeah, finish there.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see without my glasses on. With the cost of fuel, you know, transportation has gone up a little bit, but that's kind of, we kind of all know that because we see it last year, I'm sorry.
That's okay, the question I have when you're looking at where the people are coming from, New York, Philadelphia, is it Wilkes-Barre all of a sudden because of the trains coming from Wilkes-Barre? Is Harrisburg possibly the people going to the Redding to get on the trains there and come to the area?
That's a very interesting question, we can get that data. So we're trying to nail that down, we've identified zip codes of where the Pittston Station is, and we've identified, actually, we're looking at Tamaka, too. So we want to see if there's any difference in movement. We think that probably has something to do with it, number one. And number two, I wouldn't know if this happened before I came here, we never advertised in our own market. So this is the first time we've advertised within our own market, and we think that that's generating it. Between those two things, we think they're a significant piece of that. So hopefully, by the next meeting, I'll be able to answer that question pretty clearly for you.
Thank you.
Because the trains, there's no question, that's a big piece of it, there's no question. And then lodging is, lodging's the final piece there. This also shows in the top ten markets the amount of spend. Now, again, this isn't the full spend, but it gives you kind of an idea of what this looks like for June. And this does vary slightly per month. We noticed that when people are traveling more locally, the spends are less. And the spend is less per transaction than it was two years ago. So that's a big indicator. So that's a big indicator that people are more price sensitive as well. But this gives you the amount spent per market. So the amount that we're generating from advertising. You know, we're spending three to four million, for instance, in the New York market television. We're recouping that within one month based upon these transactions. But what's cool about this too, on this slide, if you look to write the spend per transaction. If we can get someone from New York or someone um from other markets. You can see how much they're spending and how valuable they are to us. But um I was surprised to see that the Harrisburg market spend was a little lower than it was in our own market. And of course, it's a lot lower than it is in New York. So a New York guest spend is very valuable to us. And they're almost ten percent of the transaction. Philadelphia is a little lower than what I would have expected, but again, that changes slightly per um. Per per time of the year. This just gives age and income, breaks it down a little bit more, so we can narrow in a little bit. Um and this again is all credit card spend that I have a little bit more information. It's kind of interesting too. Um the arrivalist data uh just mines this. It just mines IP address movement in markets. So this gives us a little bit more of a a look into where the guest is coming from and what percentages uh are staying overnight. So you could see to the left hand column, the amount of trips, eight hundred seventy one thousand. The average duration of stays, we're always looking at, we want to get that to increase. Because obviously if somebody stays more, they spend more. Um and then forty eight percent of our guests are overnight. That's a large number. So about almost fifty percent of the people who visit us are staying overnight, which means there's more spending. And then you can actually see the shares um in the middle charts there relating to what that looks like. Um the arrivals between New York, Philadelphia and New Jersey. What I like about this is it breaks out Jersey from Philadelphia. Philadelphia and Jersey are in the same marketing area. This breaks it out a little bit more. You can see Northern Jersey and Phil- and um Pennsylvania are almost equivalent as far as visitation. Which we're so close to that market, that makes sense. Now, below that, top things visited Camelback, Kalahari. Um and then you can see all the rest through there. Jim Thorpe ranks fairly highly uh within that that mix, which is good and which we knew. The crossings too, so that retail is interesting, but when you look at how many people shop at the crossings because there's no uh sales tax. You know, in New York and and New Jersey, there's a sales tax on clothing, so they do fairly well. Um these are some Facebook numbers that we've shown before, still very, very strong. Uh so the um in in the in the next few slides that I'm showing you indicates that uh. Future visitation will still be strong from the organic traffic that we're that we're attracting. That we have tracked it in July and what the expectations look for for the future. We kind of have no reason to believe that people still will not be interested in the product and visited base upon the strong uh showing in organic. Uh sessions on the site. Um and this kind of shows that graphically. And where the visitation to the site is actually coming from. Uh just some digital campaigns. We've launched twenty nine, PMV branded and co-ops. Uh some of the topics there within those campaigns are click through rates and impressions are all listed. And then some web stats, uh the it's kind of nice to look at our industry averages versus uh what we're doing. From a website perspective and uh looking to the one that that I always look at. I look on time on site, pages and bounce rate. So bounce rate, the lower the bounce rate, the better, because that means that if somebody's coming on your site, they're not leaving right away, so they find it valuable. And if they're looking through a lot of pages and they're staying on it longer, that means they find it valuable. So the average for our industry is one point three six minutes. We're two minutes, which is good, and you could see the rest of the statistics there. Um and this is just page search, which again, we're outpacing the industry, which is good. Uh our consumer newsletter stats are fairly good too, and I will leave this all with you to take a look at. Um PTN, I talked a little bit about Amazon Web Services. And for August, we did hear from some of our smaller towns that they're challenged a little bit with some traffic, so we've changed out our. We've changed our creative a little bit to concentrate more on small towns. Strasburg was one of them. Um and we will continue to do that through the end of the year. And we just uh aired a three part series on the DNL Trail, which did very, very well. Um membership, our retention, our retention rate, oh, there she is, go ahead. I'll let Mar- Marlon do this, I'm sorry.
Oh, awesome, great. Uh so just uh year to year comparison, we have been growing. Uh our membership since twenty twenty one. We are currently at five hundred and fifty five members across the four counties. We have sixty one new members to date this year and we are retaining our members at about a ninety three percent retention rate. Uh currently in Carbon County, we do have a hundred and ten members uh as well. So just working really closely with them, uh assisting them with a lot of marketing needs, especially our small guys that really need the help. We have a really nice um way to get their information, get their requests and then get them help with rack cards or creative or logos. Uh and that's one thing, we have the professional staff to support the efforts. And I think that's why you see um everything that we're doing on PTN, everything that's happening. People are contacting us to become members, which is a good sign.
Are are they new members or new people getting, you know, older businesses getting into it? Or are the new businesses, are we getting a lot of new businesses? Or and I think to encourage some of the businesses that have been here for a while, advertising is the key. And I think we see it in, you know, our thing that's going on with our traffic problem and thing. And I think a lot of it is advertising. I mean, there's some businesses that are like off the beaten path and are doing well. Because of advertising, so.
Yeah.
Um that's what I what my question is, is is it older businesses getting involved in it?
I'd say it's both, honestly. Uh it's the new members that come on board here about us. And that's through our partnerships with the Chamber. It's our partnerships with JTTA, which are very strong. So they'll hear about us and they'll see the visitor center, they'll see our uh travel guide. And that's when they know, hey, for a very small membership fee, they're going to get a lot for their benefits. But I also agree, Rocky, that we're getting folks that have been members that are hearing from others as well. So it's absolutely a combination uh of both. And I think with every, almost every new business that comes into town, we do hear from them, or we make sure that we reach out to them as well. So it's a combination. It is. Yeah, which is really good.
And we did uh, we just did something on Lee Hyten and Jim Thorpe, like kind of a documentary style piece was really. It would, it kind of like highlighted some of those little, did you guys see that?
I think I, I think I seen it. It was on like one of the, wasn't it, but I don't think it was on one of our main channels. You know what I mean? Like it would have been on channel thirteen. I think it was one of them like off channels that was like. So like one thirteen or something or whatever.
Might have been ours too.
Yeah, yeah, and and you know what? Maybe that's what it was. Like I seen it on your channel, but I think that's something that maybe. Like even our whole entire area should be seeing what is, you know, what's in all the communities in Carbon or Monroe that they can.
That's what we're doing now, like one by one, we're kind of not, we're we're kind of checking those off, like Strasburg, Milford, Honesdale, Holly, Jim Thorpe. We just did a whole new one. We did a new one for broadcast on Jim Thorpe, but you guys did one on Lanceford and Lee Hyten. It was real. I'll send you the clips. You guys could see it.
Some people that live in the town and don't even know what's in their town. And it's like, I never knew that was there. Well, it's been there for like five years, but but nobody knew it was there and they lived like. Like two blocks away or two streets from it.
I know, I know. But and the good thing too is, new product is good sometimes when you get new things. So that that gives us more of an opportunity to go in and show new products. Because with our own channel, if you keep showing the same things all the time, so the guys saw that, boop, boop, you know, so they'll turn it off. So that's why we we, it's good to continue to get that. And you know, we do want to help Lee Hyten and and uh Lanceford as much as possible because there's some good things happening there. And if if we can help people to extend their stay, if we get that two point six days up to three point six, that's a big win. You know, so we're trying to to get that too. But uh I I think the offering members services that we don't charge them for, it helps us and it helps them. So we're, and JTTA has been great too. They really have. And I think that was, did you, did I, you okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted uh again, just to, just to let you know, we we definitely have all our committees up and running. Strategic planning are nominating. We actually have a one uh board position open right now. All our other operating committees, our investment advisor uh is, and actually, one of the things we're trying to do. Is put as much money as we can right now into CDs and do CD ladders, because where are you going to get a five percent guaranteed rate? Um so we're going to talk to um to Pat Riley too and and get one open wi- with his bank. So we're continuing to just do all the committee work as 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 we have to. Uh the community involvement, all of our little programs are up and running. Uh Pocono Mountains Magazine still does a lot for nonprofits when we are asked to do it. And offering marketing assistance um as as we need to do it. Uh and big thing for us coming up is, Marlon, I'm like you, talk about this one because you know the details on this.
Yeah, so we have um, every year we do a golf tournament and that golf tournament su- supports the United Way. Um but it also supports our scholarship and that we're really proud of. I think we've doubled the amount of scholarships that we've given in the tourism and hotel industry to students working close with CCTI. Um so that's coming up in October. Our holiday dinner is in December. Uh and then I think I've indicated to most of you guys, the fall pickup. Uh for pickup, the Poconos is the twenty third. We'll be in Jim Thorpe, Mach Chunk Lake Park, uh Lee Hyten as well. Um so that we're excited about. And then we are partnering with the Chamber for the um people's shark, Damon John, and he's coming to Kalahari. So that's a big event that's going to happen and that's um got some really good response as well.
We have forty eight students from ESU's Inter- Entrepreneur Program. That's what we're really excited about him talking to them. And just a really quick word on pickup of Poconos, since we started the program in twenty eighteen. We picked up thirty four thousand seven hundred bags of trash off our roadways and covered sixteen hundred miles of roadways. We have a lot more work to do, but um so that's that's ongoing. It's a big, big, big project for us. And we are doing a lot with um our local colleges, trying to help them as much as possible and growing those relationships across the board. Uh and also keying in on workforce development because that that's definitely a high priority for our industry. And that's that's it. Um since I took my, all my three minutes for the next two years upfront. Uh I just wanted to, so I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but um I wanted to be able to answer any questions that any. And uh Mr. Chris, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I got your um email and your request. We're happy to do anything we can. So we actually started to talk about it. We're going to get you a proposal, like probably mid next week, maybe even before. And list kind of everything that we can do to to get the parking message out there because that's important.
Yeah, so we appreciate that. Chris, and I'm gonna ha- have a quick question here.
Yeah.
So I see how the data is driving what what you're doing. Can you all give some tangible examples of how that data is being used? By, for example, the membership to modify what they offer or how they offer it. To get us to three point six days or to get that spend up. Do we have any tangible examples of modifications, behavior changes?
That's, yeah, that's a great question. Some some of this data we've just gotten over the last two months. So um we have a marketing meeting coming up in October.
Yeah.
So we're, we sent this out, but we want to present it to say this is what the guest is saying and this is what they're buying.
Yeah.
So this may be something that you want to take advantage of and we're going to place it on our uh dashboard so that it can be looked at all the time.
Yeah.
That's a good point though.
I'll give you a perfect example. The ethnic uh, the ethnic makeup of those who are visiting. I can see it out of the window as I'm standing there at my computer, right? It it is changed. It's different. I look at the food offerings and I'm saying. It's not matching well the diversity of the population that is coming here.
And people are spending a lot on food already.
Right, but there's individuals who aren't going to eat pork, right? And you can see that there's a significant population that wants more vegetarian vegetarian centric. Based upon uh their culture and ethnicity. And again, I don't necessarily see the market uh meeting that demand. We know it's not overall meeting the food demand, but it's not meeting, you know, specific uh ethnic makeups.
I would agree because I think it's a a significant change in those ethnic.
Yeah.
Coming into the area, I mean, we see almost all nationalities and uh even from their dress and everything else. The way they dress and I it. I don't even want to guess how what it is, you know, it could be way off, I could be way too high, but it is significant.
Yep.
I think the other thing.
I always thought they came for Pennsylvania Dutch chicken. The ones from Lancaster, because I see all Josh Parsons.
The other thing I want to point out, working with new members and new people coming into the area, there are a number of times that Chris and I will sit on a call. With somebody who's looking to possibly set up shop here. So whether it's a restaurant or whether it's a new lodging location, what's nice is we can then shoot this data to them. They can look at the data and figure out, is this going to be a good place to actually build or bring more rooms? We just uh did that only a couple of weeks ago um in the area. So we use this data constantly. I do, and I send those dashboard links out so that people can. Look at their business and see what's happening in that, so it's very, very useful for members.
We have developers to look at it too, so the more of this kind of data we can give them when they. You know, developer may hire somebody to come in and analyze the market. So, but this is so new to us too. I mean, they they keep coming out with new capabilities every day. I'm like, really? We could get that? I mean, it's it's amazing. So, but it's a good, it's a good point.
Yeah, I I'd mention something that's really more for Cathy and economic development. But we did, very seldom does a property become available in the Mach Chunk, the old Mach Chunk Historic District. We have a a a place that has become available, right, that was selling cigarettes and cigars and vape. And now we have an opportunity in Jim Thorpe, the Historic District, right on the edge. And so I'm hoping, you know, we can attract someone into that, that would provide, not only for the residents, of course. But absolutely for the visitors to kind of get up that spend rate a little bit more. And I'm talking about right by uh Erie Insurance Company, right? That that space is now open and available, you know? And I think even on the commissioner's side, uh the Commissioner's Association Conference is going to be at Kalahari. I think it's at twenty twenty six. And I think we were in Erie this year a couple of weeks ago. And there's a lot of people like from the other side of the state that don't even know if it's in Jim Thorpe, you know? And and I think it opens us the other way, going west instead of looking at Florida or New York and everything that come to us. And I said, it's like it's a shame for Carbon County, what we have here, that we almost have to go out of county. To have a facility like that, you know, Carbon County really doesn't have something, you know, a venue that's big enough. Uh I mean, we have some, the golf courses and stuff, but it'd be nice if we could work on something like that, that we have something within Carbon County.
I'm hopeful that, and I'm hopeful that KSL will develop Blue Mountain a little more. And uh they say they are going to, and I know that they probably would have meeting space involved in that. I think that would be perfect for them, especially with the type of property that that is. And I I think it would do very, very well because Kalahari is, as you said, Kalahari is doing very, very well with that because no parking. I mean, there's so many fees that when you go to a Philly or Pittsburgh, you get dinged with or even a Hershey. Here, we can compete on a much different level than they can. And plus the surroundings are gorgeous. It's not hard to get to. It's, you know, so there's a lot of pluses, big, big, big pluses and. Um you're, and it's beautiful here, you know? That Jim Thorpe, I I'm speaking to the choir, I know, but it's like a crown jewel. I, it was great when Senator Argle had the uh Tourism Summit and it was, it was great to hear Secretary Saiger say. We have to take the experiences and the wins here and show them to everybody across the state. And that was, I I you can't say it any better than that.
And and one of the things I think we lost in Carbon County was the Mahoney Valley Country Club. It was a very nice place where somebody could have built off of that. I mean, that was a top notch golf course and. It's, you know, it's just one of them things that you had to have members that were paying ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year and we don't have that anymore. You know, it'd be nice if somebody could invest. I said, every time I drive by that, I look at it, oh my God, it's like, all it is is scrub oaks and. Trees anymore and it's a shame for something like that. So I'd like to see something like that in the future, like come to Carbon County.
And that's hopefully with us helping to market it a little more. Hopefully that'll help develop some of those, because we're in New York and Philly on television. So we're hoping that maybe it'll help develop some of those properties.
One of the things I want to do real quick is they, at the uh Commissioner's Conference, as Rocky pointed out. Uh three of the businesses did donate uh prizes for the Commissioner's. uh, three of the businesses did donate uh, prizes for the Commissioners' drawings. Uh, one was uh, Lee Heighton Outdoor Center, Rafting Crypt for Six. The uh, inner Jim Thorpe donated uh, uh, dinner and uh, the Running Blue Mountain Railroad for ride tickets. So one winner was from Tioga County who won the rafting and he certainly plans on coming to use them. It doesn't always happen. And that's one thing I'd like to see tracked when you're, and I talked to Sky Vogel about this as well. And uh, about how they can track, uh, or they track it, others don't. How many are giving these uh, tickets or prizes out and how many are being used, so? Uh, and the other prize winner comes to Jim Thorpe frequently, but he was never on the train and he got the train ride ticket. So it does help uh, bring people into the area and spend a little bit more money and to uh, and a lot will come back. They really enjoy it, so I I appreciate those three uh, businesses that contributed this past year. I'll be looking for them next year, hopefully, or at least the Commissioners here will be, so.
We have to be one of the only places in the country that has two passenger railroad services that are running. I mean, that's amazing.
I said, we go to the conferences and I almost feel bad because I tell the other counties that we have two brand-new hospitals and we have the railroad coming through there and they're like mad as we, we, we barely have a hospital and we have nothing coming through it. And we have such a great county that we can build off of it. I said, we have a good future and I said, my biggest thing is zoning. And I think we have to get into the zoning so that when you come here and uh, you know, per, you have, uh, how could I say? Investors that want to come here, they're they're coming to a darn good place. I mean, they all, they're they're really coming to like a a gem of Pennsylvania.
We know, Rocky, I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner D, um, one of the things I know we've talked about a lot is housing. And I know we've kind of talked about it in different, and we're still working on that. Our guy's pretty close to getting a project fingers and toes crossed in Monroe started. So we still wa- are putting that coalition together and um, zoning's a big part of that, as you know, you know, so. But thank you because you've always been really supportive of that.
Chris, I have one alibi in Marlins. So you know, there will be a press release and Marlins inbox, I know also uh, Kelly and Ryan will have it. But it is our aspiration, if the motion passes today, to enter into the agreement to start uh, pay-by-texts for parking. And I think that's going to be significant for a couple of reasons. One is we see significant queues at about three of our kiosks, right? And again, and that adds to the frustration of the visitor. But now, as they come up that kiosk, there will hopefully be a sign that says pay-by-text. And it's going to be no download of an app, no standing in line for a kiosk, but simply texting PARK to a number, boom! And within about thirty seconds to a minute, they could be moving off and getting into downtown Jim Thorpe into the hi- Historic District. So again, if that goes, I think that'll be really helpful. The aspiration is to have that in place for fall foliage, so we don't have the backup, the queues. And also, I think it's a safety issue, right? We want to get people out of the lot where the cars are, get them onto that D and L trail to safe pedestrian crossings. So I think it's a a good thing that we have the opportunity to implement here.
So we talked about that a little bit this morning, brought it on the way down.
Yeah.
We're on the JTTA site that we house now.
Yeah.
We're going to develop a couple of different things related to parking.
Yeah.
And maps, you know, with the uh, with the ride services. So anything you want us to put on there?
Yeah.
We're happy to do that.
Yeah.
If that helps.
Yeah, we have some great maps and stuff that Jason has put together and stuff, so we'll definitely ensure if it's helpful, yeah.
All right, move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Marlon, Chris, thank you very much for that very informative report. Ready to proceed? Yep.
Okay, the next item is the Report of Executive Sessions, help?
There was one executive show session held on Friday, August eighteenth at eight forty-five AM for personnel reasons.
The department reports the budget transfers?
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yeah.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Excuse me, supplemental appropriation?
Move to approve.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Expenditures, approval of check numbers, two-three-eight-one-eight-eight through two-three-eight-two-nine-four for expenditures to the general fund clearing account, totaling two-hundred-ninety-five thousand, five-hundred-twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
There will be no treasurer's report today. Also, if the personnel report for county departments, there is no report. The acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Adult probation for approval and execution requests received from Chief Adult Probation Officer to authorize Amendment Number Two to extend the grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to provide drug and alcohol assessments to com- be completed at the prison. Total funding remains the same at fifty thousand, three-hundred-and-eleven dollars and twelve cents.
Motion approved, next. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Advertising for ratification. Authorize the advertisement of the invitation to bid for the CDBG CV contract, number seven-five-five-one-two, fiscal year two thousand twenty. Carbon County Homeless Facilities Peaceful Nights Women Shelter, general and electrical contracts only. The project end date is September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Move them up for ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Children and youth for approval and execution, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Purchase agreements submitted by the uh, listed contractors as per the attached rates.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Elections for ratification, submission of a grant application for Act two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-eight election integrity grant through the Pennsylvania Department of State to support county election administration in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-ninety-four dollars, seventy-four cents. Funding is in compliance with the requirements related to pre-canvassing, canvassing, absentee and mail-in ballots data, voter list maintenance and post-election auditing.
Move to ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
The Worker Protection and Investment Certification for Ratification, Executive Order Number two thousand twenty-one dash six, the Worker Protection and Investment Certification Form, as required for submission of the grant application for the Act two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-eight election integrity grant through the Pennsylvania Department of State.
Motion to ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Farmland Preservation for Approval and Execution. Acceptance of the Proposal Received from Andrus Appraisals of Palmerton, Pennsylvania in the amount of three thousand dollars per farm, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for appraisal services of farms under consideration for the purchase of an agricultural conservation easement as per the attached listed forms.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Fiscal Data for Approval and Execution. The Renewal Agreement with Sirius Computer Solutions Incorporated of San Antonio, Texas for Hardware Maintenance, nine-by-five for the term of October one, two thousand twenty-three to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, covering the IBM AS four hundred computer system at a total cost of two thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. This represents no increase.
Motion approved, next.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Human Services for Acceptance, the Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three State Food Purchase Program. Fourth Quarter Expense and Data Report, as submitted by Shepherd House Incorporated to the Department of Agriculture.
Move to accept.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Information Technology for Approval and Execution. Renewal Agreement with Integra One of Allentown, Pennsylvania for Fortinet Unified Threat Management Protection for the Administration Building for the term of July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three through July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four at a total cost of two thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
Motion approved, execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Parking for Approval and Execution. Agreement with Bud's Ticket Company of Cockinville, Pennsylvania to enable pay-by-text option for consumers utilizing the county parking lot. The consumers will pay a convenience fee of thirty-five cents with no cost to the county.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
The Solicitors' Report?
Thank you. Uh, we've received uh, three banner requests. The uh, first for Approval and Execution is uh, Bowmanstown Area Residents Connected or Bark for Bark's Annual Dog Show. I I see what they did there. It's one of those things you don't, until you hear it aloud, you don't get the pun. That will be on October first, two thousand twenty-three. The banner to be displayed, uh, September twenty-second through October ninth of two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved, execute.
Uh, second on discussion. Uh, the event is on the first, yet the request continues through the ninth. And by doing that, we take away a potential opportunity for another.
Especially during fall.
Yeah, for fall foliage, so I wonder if we can't reach out to them and see, is there a reason why it has to stay through the ninth versus not come down on the second?
Is this the, not, I thought it was a two-week limit as well. If we look at the dates, uh, first is on a Monday? I didn't bring back phone.
I think the first is on a Wednesday.
I don't have my phone.
I'm not positive.
We'll ask the press if they have their phone with their calendar, the first of October. Think it'd be a weekend.
It's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday. Yeah.
Let me look at the calendar here, because the the application is actually saying the first Saturday in October. Are you pulling it up? That would be the seventh and.
Okay.
Yeah, the seventh.
That explains it.
Oh, okay, so it should be the seventh and not the first?
Yes, so.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it just says this, uh, move to modify to reflect October seventh, the accurate date, that's all.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Good catch, thanks. We also received a request from Lee Heighton Downtown Partnership for the Spellbinding Street Festival, uh, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three from noon until six PM. The banner to be displayed, uh, September second through September nineteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
To approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
And the request to display a banner was also submitted by uh, Shrine of Saint Therese of Neskooning, Pennsylvania for the Saint Therese Shower of Roses. The banner to be displayed September twelfth through October third of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
For the Correctional Facility, uh, seeking approval and execution of an agreement with the Carbon Monroe Pike Drug and Alcohol Commission of Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania to provide drug and alcohol treatment counseling services for the inmate population at the Carbon County Correctional Facility for the term July seventeenth through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three at a cost of thirty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, and that's to be paid through the commissary funds.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
And for the uh, five-twenty-five Iron Street Project, uh, seeking approval and execution of Change Orders Numbers Three and Four with Master Mechanical Corporation of McAdoo, Pennsylvania, decreasing the contract by fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and ninety-six cents for a new contract total of five-hundred-and-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, four cents.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
And also for the five-twenty-five Iron Street Project, seeking approval and execution of Change Orders Numbers Two and Three with Triangle Fire Protection Incorporated of Carlisle, Pennsylvania, decreasing the contract by uh, uh, I believe it's actually four thousand, six dollars, sixty-three cents for a new contract total of seventy thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, thirty-seven cents.
Motion approved, execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Any further business? Your United Commissioners' Reports, Mr. Honor?
I don't have much at this time, but I just want to say, because everybody knows that the change orders were both the reduction coming back to the county. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Uh, simply, I said, Kelly and Ryan should have a press release in your box about the text to pay, pay by text, that's all.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes, uh, a couple of quick items. Uh, Leadership Program, Carbon Leadership kicked off last night. Have twelve new uh, uh, people in this re- uh, program. Eleven of our former uh, graduates uh, were in the session, so uh, a lot of good people as well. I want to thank the businesses and everyone else for participating and for supporting and sponsoring the uh, twelve students in our uh, session, including one from Carbon County, the county itself here from the Assessment Office, Shannon. So uh, real nice little event last night and kickoff, meet and greet, et cetera. The other thing, I want to congratulate the family promise for their official ribbon cutting on Monday evening. Uh, they have the capacity of eight people, or eight families, I should say. Uh, they had eight, they had a graduate yesterday, they have a waiting list. They're down to seven today, but by the end of the day, they should have their, be back up to full capacity and they do have a list. So they're, you know, after a long, hard journey and many issues with finances and turnovers and uh, zoning issues, et cetera, they're finally uh, on their way to, you know, helping out uh, families. And uh, the vacancy was due to a graduation of a family yesterday, so uh, and they had one speaker who was a graduate and how it helped their family to move on and better themselves. So the other thing I want to bring up, uh, we're, the Emergency Operations Center and Training Committee is going to have an invitation to visit, view and experience what are, occurs at our Emergency Operations and Training Center. And this is geared towards the uh, elected officials, local elected officials, municipalities, the uh, councils and township supervisors as well as the candidates for those positions, uh, including commissioners and uh, mayors and uh, uh, people like that. And uh, it's going to be on Saturday, September ninth, from nine AM till noon. We'll have some uh, scenarios, the police uh, end of it. They are putting together a active shooter scenario for the uh, people to observe. Uh, and it's to showcase what we really do there and gain the support. The, I want to announce that uh, two weeks ago, the police ran an active shooter training program on Monday and Tuesday. There were seventeen students in it and nine, or nine instructors. Uh, I want to tell you that this is unheard of for the police to get together and trained like this in the county. We all know what it's like in today's world with the active shooters and we just never know when and why. But it is really great to see so many police officers involved in these programs right now. And uh, and when the co- committee formed, it was hard to get the police involved and uh, keep them involved because of turnovers and various other things, but they were active in the development of the training facility. Uh, we had one or two people and to see them fully utilizing that facility is great. I don't have the numbers for that uh, right now. I'm going to separate that out, police, fire versus VS, uh, EMS. And that was the other one that was extremely difficult to get involved was EMS. And uh, they were the first ones to use it and they're working with the police departments and others on active shooter training and other uh, issues they face when they get out on the street. But uh, we hope to be able to uh, do some scenarios with the fire end, let them gear up, put an air pack on and maybe drag some hose up the uh, stair tower and uh, lay hose out, half the load hose. And give them an idea of what we do, maybe smoke the building and give them an idea of the conditions that we have. I don't know if we can do burns because of safety reasons, uh, we wouldn't allow them to go in a burn room naturally because they don't have the uh, the expertise. But I have brochures, letters went out to every municipality. We just sent out emails to every uh, municipa- uh, everyone that is a current and candidate. They went out and we send it to the secretaries, et cetera, by email. So we're trying to push it and hopefully the news media, we're sending it out to them as well to get some coverage. And the main reason is that uh, the Fire Association, each of the members pay a hundred dollar dues every year to help pay for supri- uh, supplies and help support the uh, facility. Police don't have that. Police don't have that opportunity yet, and, uh, hopefully they'll support their police departments and contribute to the operations there. So that's all I have on that. Meeting adjourned. Okay. Kelly? Welcome back.
There's been talk about a possible reassessment of the county. Is that even on your radar?
I mean, we're, we're reading the articles.
My opinion though is, uh, there's a lot of talk out there, nobody has approached this yet. I have a lot of different ideas on, like, I, I don't know where they're actually getting all their information, because the information is out there that it only costs a million dollars, well, it costs a little bit more than a million dollars to do it. Our operation here itself needs to have the system upgraded, which is an extra cost to it. So I don't know where these people are getting this that's in the newspaper that's only costing this much, but I think we have the figures, and nobody has come to us. I mean, there's talk, they call, but nobody has actually come here and, and requested for us.
That number that was given, I think it was at one million, it was way off.
Yeah.
I had talked to Tyler, a company that does and currently has part of our programs here. Like Rocky said, it's an issue. We have an old DOS program from a former company, and, uh, Tyler is nursing everything along, and it's, uh, uh, has to be replaced because there's dual entries, et cetera, and they can't figure out the, uh, formula that the former company used. But there's forty-eight thousand, approximately forty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-forty parcels. The number I was given at sixty-eight dollars a parcel, and I got a different story when I got the, uh, total numbers in each school district. I got that broken down, and the cost of sixty-eight dollars a parcel is roughly three and a quarter million dollars just for the, and it takes, it's a thirty-month process. So plus the cost, I'm still waiting for a ballpark figure for the cost of, uh, doing, uh, the computer program that I don't have yet. And I would assume that that it is a quite costly program, uh, transferring all that information into that new system. Uh, it's going to be quite expensive, and, uh, would they be pushing, the school districts be pushing it if they are required to help contribute to the, uh, reassessment? And that's the problem. The county is responsible, and the municipalities and the school districts, and school districts in particular benefit the most, uh, with the, uh, assessment, reassessment. So the county is going to have to foot the bill. I'd like to see it changed, that the, uh, minute, uh, school districts in particular would have to contribute as well according to their parcels, because it is a huge expense. You know, it's, uh, I lost my train of thought there. The issue I wanted to bring out about that, but, uh, they, they can only, even if we did the reassessment and adopt it in thirty months, they can only increase their taxes by a certain percent. So it's not going to change a whole lot right in the beginning. Of course, you're going to either be at the low end and have to pay more. And, uh, to me, in my opinion, it's the people that have, the older people, uh, have the value in their home that's a lot less. Their value went up, they're going to pay more. The people that bought, overspent on their homes might come down, and you're going to have the people in the middle. But for us, we're the people in the middle right now, and we're the ones that have to make that decision and foot the bill. So, uh, yeah, something that's on the radar, and we'll see what happens in the future.
And, and my fear with that is, we, Carbon County is an elderly county, and you look at some of the people, in fact, like even my neighbors, uh, they were married and fifty years ago and lived in the same house that they live in now. And now what's going to happen to them? Their house has increased in value, but where, where, what is that going to give them when this reassessment comes out? Their, their taxes are going to go up, and I, I think that's one of the things that's bad about reassessing. And, you know, and, and people came in here, and my opinion is, I mean, you, you have the opportunity, and I think I even have it, you know what? I might even have it in my drawer, on the contracts of the realtors, on page nine, it's writing even states in there about that they can be taxed a different way than what it is. Are they telling the people that are giving fifty thousand dollars more for a house that's worth two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, you know, and all of a sudden now it comes back? And it's the county commissioners' responsibility. I think somewhere along the line, somebody else has to take responsibility. But I, I, like I said, I just fear, and there's going to be all kinds of topics, the ones that are paying too much, think they paid too much, and the ones in the middle think they're all right, but they might get affected. But like I said, the ones that lived in, in their house, I had a bunch of neighbors that were married in nineteen fifty, you know, that live in their house, and their house, they might have been paying two thousand dollars taxes, and the value was maybe thirty thousand dollars. You know, the, uh, it might have been thirty to fifty thousand dollars at that time in two thousand, when was it? Two thousand one or two thousand time it was assessed? And on, on the assessing, I really don't think this is a good time to assess. Uh, my feeling is, right now, we're at the highest level of our taxes. If we reassess and it comes down, um, does that mean when it gets sold to real estate, they're going to hold it at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Or are they going to try to sell it for the three-hundred thousand? So my opinion would be, maybe it's something that we ought to just let the dust settle a little bit and then try to approach this maybe in two years from now, when it might make a little bit more sense. Right now, the value of the houses is at the maximum that I think it's going to be, because people are looking at this, and, and they're coming in and their taxes are too high. I think they're realizing that, and, and that's up to, you know, whatever they want to do. If I want something, if I go out and get a steak, and it's a forty-dollar steak, and I think it's worth it, I'm going to buy it, but I pay for it. So that's, I think, the philosophy that people should use on buying a house. If you want that top-notch steak, you got to pay for it. Plain and simple.
Kelly, we have twenty-nine taxing authorities, right, in, in, in Carbon County, and, and I wouldn't make the, the point that we need to have a, a consensus on moving forward, and as Commissioner Nochtine said, sharing the burden, uh, that's associated with that. But we clearly have a perception problem when it comes to spot assessments. You know, are they taking place, are they not? All right? Obviously, we have a challenge process for assessments here in the county, but it is an issue that needs to be looked at. And, and I, I would say, this is a perfect issue that the council governments could take a lead on. That is, you know, convocating, you know, bringing, bringing the entities together, the taxing authorities to talk about it and, and help make some proposals on, on the way ahead to address, uh, a concern, all concerns, both on, on all sides of the issue.
And I, and I think, like Chris hit on a little bit too, spot assessing. I don't even know if that's actually the right name for what is happening at Carbon County. Because spot assessing would be, I go to your house, and I want to assess your house, but right now, they're going off of the value of what people are paying. Is that actually spot assessing? That's what I said. All these people that are talking about this, I don't know if they know, uh, know the terms or what is actually happening and what has to be done in the county to do this. You know, we're getting an awful lot of feedback from the, you know, from, from whatever, media, but I, I think the term of spot assessing is incorrect also, you know.
I want to touch real quick on the, uh, the cost of the county. We are currently paying, or, uh, we have a, uh, an assessment board who hears all the appeals. The appeals are filed, can be filed by the municipality and the school districts. The coun- county cannot file appeals, but yet we pay the bill. Uh, I'm not sure what the numbers are on, uh, the appeals that come before us right now. It could be a couple of hundred, they already hearing, uh, assessment repeal, uh, appeals right now. We have a three-member board. I know what happened, what, in two thousand, we accepted the, uh, uh, CLT, the company that did that program back then, we accepted the, uh, the assessment, reassessment, and we were overwhelmed with appeals by everyone. We had our appeal boards working day and evenings for, I don't know what, several weeks, you know, and that's another on-scene expense and a top of the cost of doing the assessment. It's the appeals that we do every year that it keeps adding up. I'm not sure what that budget is and what they get paid per diem, but, uh, did we have two appeal boards there for a while, I think? Because we had so many appeals in two thousand when we implemented the last one. So we're talking several million dollars, and don't forget, the taxpayers in this county have to foot that bill as well, so. But, and the last time, the county tried to stop it, they, uh, fought it, cost them twenty-five thousand dollars to fight a losing battle. And, you know, I'm not going to, you know, I don't know what I'm going to do should it come to that point. Sometimes it's not worth the fight because of the cost, and we're going to probably wind up losing anyway. So, yeah, they forced us into it. We're going to be up the creek.
And, and even like with this thing, what everybody's calling spot assessment, just like I said, everybody has the right to appeal. It's plain and simple. You know, if you, you think you're paying too much, then come in and appeal. That's what I said, like, there's a lot involved in this, uh, reassessment, and I still think the, the elderly people, which is the majority of our population, is going to be hit with it.
So you have been getting feedback from people?
Um, people call, but they don't really have no.
Yeah, I've gotten some calls, you know.
They don't have justification to what they're telling me.
Most of them, yeah, most of them were elderly.
Oh, yeah.
There's no official correspondence to us. You would have seen it, actually.
Yeah.
You know, there's been no.
I know, I was reading the paper that, I mean, I read that there's a group getting together to come to us.
Yeah.
Neither one of them has, and none of them have ever contacted us.
Lenzro Burrow went on the record this week, opposing.
Oh, just opposing, right? Okay. And I think some of the letters that we do get, we even, you know, things that we do have, it is from the elderly that they are opposing it. I mean, it is, and it's like, you know, it's, it comes down to.
Few people on the street told me.
Yeah.
I did get a few phone calls as well. That's good, because that drew it. Over your three-minute mark. It's not as bad as Crystal. Okay. Right. Anything.
I just have, uh, the election integrity grant, kind of what is that, what will be used for?
Uh, salaries, uh, uh, things of that nature, you know, printing.
Yeah, so there's, there's a, there's eight, nine items that can be used for. I, I mean, we can send you the entire, uh, the legislation that, and that provides it.
Is, is it good help getting money to kind of help with, um, you know, these costs for it?
Oh, yeah. Heavy dollar cut.
Yep. And some of this, like that, like that Act eighty-eight is the thing, is supposed to be the ongoing. Uh, I think last year we got two-hundred-some thousand, this year it was two-hundred-some thousand. I think then, once the years progress, I think the following year drops to like the one-hundred-and-ninety thousand, but it's usually about that, but it's like to, you can see it on the sheet. And last year, we paid for overtime for the, the, the girls, even for them to go down here. Uh, I think we got a, a folder, you know, there's all th- different kind of things that, and we have to use it to full capacity. I mean, I think even right now, we might even be looking at a printer or something that we could do, but, but there's a lot of things. We'll, we'll wind up using that money up.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.